Sorry for the late start. We had an executive session this morning. We also had one on Tuesday. There should be a list on the podium for any of those in attendance who want to speak in public comments. And there are empty seats. We prefer that people sit in our seats, not against the walls. Would appreciate it. Oh, I was corrected. Executive session was Monday. I mean deliberative was Monday where we had the executive session. Both on legal matters. All right, we'll give it 30 seconds and I'm gonna hit this gavel and we're gonna get this party started. All right. Good morning and welcome to the City of Chester City Council meeting for today, Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. As always, we open with an invocation followed by the pledge to the flag. This morning, the invocation will be delivered by Dr. Lisa Dennis, the interim pastor of New Jerusalem Church of Chester, Church of God in Christ, and also our police chaplain, President All Rise.
Let us pray. Most gracious and merciful God, our Father, we come before you today thanking you for another day. Another opportunity to give thanks and praise to you. Another opportunity to get things right and right things wrong. Another opportunity to let our light shine that men, women, boys, and girls can be drawn closer to you. We realize today that if we ever needed you before, we need you now. We need to trust and rely on you like never before. We lift up this mayor and council in our city of Chester, Pennsylvania, zip code 19013. Let your righteous wisdom and judgment be their counsel and command as they bring leadership and direction through their offices of city government. Teach them to be sensitive to your voice and obedient to your will. Close the doors that are not from you, open the ones that lead to life, purpose, and peace. Even when the way is unclear, give them faith to take the next step. Order their steps in your love, your wisdom, your truth. May it bring glory to you. God bless our city, our community, our country, state, and everyone. We pray in your holy and righteous name. Amen.
Amen.
I deliver the message to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll say again, we have empty seats. I prefer people will sit in the seats and not hang out on the, on the walls. Looks like we have some technology issues today, huh? I didn't know how much I counted on the screen in front of me, but we can get this thing going on paper. Madam Clerk, it's time to see who's here today.
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Present.
Green.
Present.
West.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting on October 8th, or a previous meeting October 8th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
And it sounds like everybody, the ayes have it. Uh, before we go any further, I want to announce that uh, myself and Councilman Green, somewhere around 11:30, we're gonna have to get out of here. So if you see us leave, the deputy mayor will be handling the conclusion of the meeting if it goes that long. Do we have any public comment on the agenda items? Agenda items only.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Resolution 117. I just wanted to, a explanation on what does it mean by with no substantial cost to the city? What does that mean?
You wanna take that one, Councilman? That was your question.
Uh, yes. So, um, the Philadelphia Union Foundation and Love Football, um, they have, they are building, revitalizing the Seventh Street Basketball Courts. And through Kevin Durant and a number of other donors, they are funding it completely. And so the soft costs that the city maker are like permits or, um, any soft costs like that. So we don't really have to pay any money towards that project.
Okay, so what's the no substantial cost? When you say that, it means that there might be something, but we don't know what it is. I mean, that's the way I'm interpreting that. Is it gonna be any cost? Even if it's a little bit of cost, it's still a cost.
We don't anticipate that there will be any cost to the city.
Okay, so should it have no cost to the city? Because here it looks like later on you might have to pay something. I mean, leaving yourself open that you might have to pay something, so. I'm just, you know.
You wanna?
Just the verbiage.
Help clear us up, please.
The wording is really.
Yeah, there may be some staff costs in, in supporting the particular project. There may be some additional insurance costs when we go to our insurance carrier and identify exactly what these improvements would cost to insure. But there would be no actual hard costs when it comes to the actual construction.
Okay, so can you word that different? With saying no substantial cost, you may say might be a little cost to the city, then that's, that's an affirmative. No substantial means. You know, it's in the gray area, so I'm just asking for clarity. Because eventually I think it's gonna be a cost to you to do something.
We don't anticipate that there will be a cost, but if we do, it's gonna be very minimum. The entire project is being funded through this organization. So if there is a cost, it'd be very minimum, no substantial cost. But however, we don't know what that cost would be, but we're anticipating it to be no cost.
All right, but you're gonna prove something and, I mean, you're just leaving yourself open. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments on public, uh, agenda items? Old business, Council. We have any old business we wanna?
Yes. Um, the last time we met here in council, um, I had spoke about the Upland Hurricane football players. And after the meeting, I met with a Ms. Trish, and I may be saying her name wrong, Carrato. She's the executive director of the Ron Jawas, Jaworski Foundation. And, um, I just wanted to read the statement that I have. On behalf of the City of Chester and our young athletes, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to you and the Jaws Youth Playbook for your generous donation of $5,000 to the Upland Hurricanes football team. Your contribution goes beyond dollars. It invests in hope, teamwork, and the future of our youth. The invitation for the team to attend November 22nd Temple University's football game is an incredible opportunity and experience for these young players, and they will remember this for a lifetime. I thank that organization for giving the Upland Hurricanes $5,000 towards their equipment that was stolen. Uh, also, um, new business.
Whoa, 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 whoa. We're still on old business.
Well, okay, I'm sorry.
Old business? All right, I got a couple things. I'll say it's only old because it's, it goes back a little while. But save yours for new business. I got a few notes scribbled here. Uh, where do we begin? The Army Navy annually has a soccer game and it's held down at the Subaru Park. It occurred on October 10th. Uh, I've attended the last three years. I've got to know some of the, uh, people from both Army and the Navy. Last year, they had a ship docked in Philadelphia, which I got to visit and got to know some of the, uh, people onboard. I really think nothing of it. It's just a moment in time. But this year, one of the Navy officers, maybe not an officer, but one of the Navy personnel who was on that ship was on the ship again this year. And he reached out to me. I didn't even know I shared my number with him. And, uh, just reached out to say hi. I wanted to say hi again. We did connect at the meeting or at the event, at the soccer game at the stadium. So the Phillies were in the playoffs at the time and he was just curious on his downtime. Is there any way I can direct him to Philly playoff tickets, which is a hot ticket? They lost anyway, so by the time they were here, they weren't playing anyway. But I did say that I, I may have an opportunity, if you're into sports, to provide you with something else with the help of a friend. I would only share that story because I want someone in the seating area to hear this. So they took advantage of it. They had a good time. They really appreciated it. But I got a note this, well, late last night or early this morning from this person's mother. And it really touched my heart. And I'm not reading it for me and I'm not doing it to brag, but I want the person in the room who made this happen know how much the moment was appreciated. And she says, her name's Mary Walston, and she's speaking about her son E N One Elliott on the LCS Cooperstown. I spoke with my son Daniel this morning and he told me how well you treated him and his fellow Navy buddies while on Philly recently. I can't imagine how difficult it is for our service members to be away from family and friends, even for happy events like Fleet Week. And that's the, that's what happened on the week they, they came up for the soccer game. I know my little granddaughters miss their daddy terribly when he's away. And of course, I still worry about him being in harm's way no matter how old he gets. He will always be my baby. Knowing people like you still exist, being conned for no reason other than obeying the golden rule makes this mama proud. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Sincerely, Mary Walston. These are moments that just make me happy to be a mayor, that we can do those type, type of things. And for that person who the room and, and they know who they are, thank you as well for that. Speaking of Subaru Park, I just want to announce that the home team of Philadelphia who plays here in Chester, the Philadelphia Union, they are in the playoffs. They won their Eastern Conference. They're the champs of the Eastern Conference. They're the number one seed. Their first game is Sunday at 5:30 PM. They have home field advantage through the entire playoffs because they won what's called the Supporter's Shield. For those of you who know how soccer and hockey works, every game that you play, you're assigned points. If you lose, you get no points. If you tie, you get one point. If you win, you get three points. Philadelphia Union got the most points of all the MLS teams this season. So they won the Supporter's Shield, which is a real trophy that they'll have on display. Do I hear a clap somewhere? All right, let's clap for that. That really is a big deal. Soccer fans go crazy over this. But, uh, they'll have home team advantage in all the playoff games. All right, that's that. Let's get closer to home with some sports. Our Chester High School football team. You can clap on that. They've had a great season this year. They had a great season last year. They had a great season the year before, and they had a great season the year before. And everything being equal, they've won every Del Vail one game in the last four years. They literally went 16-0 in the league games. Now here's what's crazy is the stats that come with that. In the last 16 Del Vail contests, Chester has outscored its opponents. Y'all sitting down?
Yeah.
Some of y'all, I even told to sit down, ain't sitting down, but okay. They outscored their opponents 748 to 64. That's an average score of 46 to 4. One Saturday at homecoming, it was their eighth shutout of the 16 wins. So half of the games they play, the other team doesn't score. Only twice have they allowed multiple scores in a game. And this is amazing. The narrowest margin of victory is 22 points. They be kicking butt so bad that no one even gets closer than 22 points in the Del Vail. So for that, I just wanted to reiterate that publicly to tell, to tell them from this podium how proud we are of the football program. You know, Chester has been for decades, you know, that basketball team, that basketball powerhouse. But because of reasons outside of our control, and most of it is the, the poachers, those other scouts that come in our town and, and take our kids, especially the tall ones. Uh, we're still competitive, but you know, we lose that powerhouse type image because our homegrown guys are going to different schools all over the place. They're not quite poaching our football players yet. And as a result of the youth programming that gets these kids ready, by the time they get to high school as freshmen, they're contributing strongly. Uh, we have become a football powerhouse to a point that other teams don't even wanna play us. We can't even fill a whole schedule because when they go to try to get some good teams to play, they don't wanna be beat by Chester. So it sort of looks lopsided when they beat teams by these huge margins. But playoff time's coming up. I think the first playoff game is not this week, but next week at home. So come on out and support Chester High Football. Let's give them a hand. And the last old piece of news, which is still not complete, but I'm gonna need all of your help. On October 16th, out in Delaware County, the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority granted the City of Chester, I gotta clap, I saw his face somewhere. Granted the City of Chester $100,000 to fix the band shelf out in Chester Park. The stage that we have out there is considered the band. The surface will be repaired. The roof will be repaired. The whole guts of it will be repaired. We're looking at dressing rooms, bathrooms, air conditioning, the whole nine. The only problem is, or it's not a problem, it still has to be approved by Delaware County Council. Now they almost rubber stamp everything that comes out of this, this committee, but it would be so strong if a number of us showed up on, uh, November 11th at their agenda meeting where they make all the decisions before their council meeting to show support.
Not on November 11th?
Not on November 11th.
Not on November 11th?
Not on my day.
That's your day?
That's a Tuesday.
That's a Monday?
Veterans Day.
That's a Tuesday. Okay. So they won't have, I mean, they'll be closed, obviously. I didn't consider that, but thanks for bringing it to my attention. They may have that agenda meeting on Monday then in preparation. But I'll, I'll be clear on that. We'll put it on our website. But it'll be great if a few of you can come out and be there, present when the county will vote on that. And you do the same thing you do here. They give you a couple minutes to stand at the mic and support the grant that we want them to approve. That was already granted by the, uh, the Funding Authority, the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority, of which Mr. Andrew Nelson is a board member. Thank you, Andrew, and... Now to new news. New business.
Okay. So, um, over the past couple of months, I've been working with two individuals, Ms. Sandra Terrell and Tish Jackson from Moravia Health. And we've been working on a grant to reverse food insecurity in the city of Chester. And the title of it is reversing food insecurity and health disparity through development of a greenhouse hub in the city of Chester. And I'm pleased to announce that we finished the grant proposal. The proposal seeks, uh, a million dollars in funding as a part of a broader 1.5 million project. And it's aimed at addressing food insecurity, health disparities through a creation of a greenhouse hub in the city of Chester. This initiative represents a critical step towards improving access to fresh, healthy food options while creating jobs and sustainable opportunities for local residents. We anticipate a response from the foundation within the next month. And we remain very optimistic that this partnership will help transform the health and well-being of our community. The other new issue that has come up, and I will read this statement so that I can be clear. And this is in regards to the, um, police misconduct. In recent weeks, I've received numerous complaints from members of our community regarding police misconduct. As a city council member, I share the public's concern and believe that accountability within our police department is essential for trust and transparency. It is important to clarify, though, that city council members do not have administrative authority over the police department. Those decisions are solely on the mayor and the police commissioner. I've communicated these concerns in multiple emails to my colleagues while the only one who responded was the mayor. He requested that I forward all information directly to him or Commissioner Blackwell, and I have done that. I want to make it clear that I'm not against the police department. I support the men and women who serve and protect our city daily. However, I believe that accountability and fairness are necessary to ensure that our community feels both protected and respected. My commitment remains to the people of the city of Chester for justice, transparency, and safety for all.
Any other comments on new business, Council?
Yes, I'll take this time to go for new business as I don't wanna take up the community's time when it is your time to give you a public comment. I want to respect your all's time for coming and your voice and putting everything on public record. So I want to address the new business now. I also have a written statement in regards to some of the comments that I've been receiving via social media, phone calls, emails, uh, directly. I myself, Councilman Davis, just speaking for myself, am in full support of the betterment of the community in our city of Chester for positive change towards our education system, our entertainment, and most importantly, our kids', children, adults', safety. That is my number one concern always as a member and a young man who is a father now. And that being said, I stand completely in support of our police department and Commissioner Blackwell and decisions that she's been making with helping and support making a safer Chester. And the numbers that we read off earlier and with the homicide rate, the lack of, the lack of incidents that have been occurring in our community and everything that has been positively changing in Chester. Meanwhile, I do not support chaos. I do not support police brutality or any misconduct from police officer in any forms of fashion. As a young man who was a grandson of police officer, I understand what positive community policing looks like. And what I've seen unfortunately was not that. We have to hold our elected officials, which is myself, our people who serve our community, which is our police officers, our firefighters, and our first responders accountable. They must be held accountable to a higher power. They do answer directly to the mayor and the police commissioner. And I'm asking that our community still continue to come out every day and hold each and every one of us, myself included, accountable for everyone's actions and decisions that they make. We need to help, we hold ourselves accountable, everyone. I'm asking the police, the commissioner, we've already talked, we are holding everyone accountable. Because what, yes ma'am, because what I seen was unacceptable. And the way our people were treated was unacceptable. Lastly, I want to express my gratitude and the passion that I am witnessing today from our community and our residents. Please come use your voice. Please, I'm asking you to continue to come, show up, and fight the hard fight that you're fighting. But I'm asking you out of respect to do it in a positive and passionate manner. Do it with the complete and utmost respect for your community, the people who serve, and anyone that comes after us, and everyone that left before us. I'm asking we all come together with solutions. Great leaders find problems. Better leaders come up with solutions. And I'm asking that we all come together to be the wonderful leaders that we can be and come up with solutions. I am here to come up with solutions with you all. I don't want anyone to feel ignored. No one should feel ignored today, tomorrow, at all. I want you to be heard and understand that we stand with you as a community. However, this growth that we need to have as a community starts with everyone. It starts with our teachers. It starts with our parents. It starts with our childcare providers. It starts with our coaches. We all have to be better. And I'm asking our community to be better because this is the community that I love. I grew up here. I'm gonna stay here. I'm gonna raise my son here. But we have to hold each other accountable and we all have to be better. Hold me accountable, everybody. Hold me accountable. But the same way you all are gonna hold me accountable, be willing to have the hard conversation when I hold you accountable. Because we all can, we all can be better. Lastly, I just wanna say thank you all for being here. Thank you for your time. And thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to serve as your city councilman. I do not take that lightly. And I just wanna say thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk, for whispering in my ear. Letting me know that on November 10th, that Monday, they're gonna have their deliberative meeting. That's the Delaware County Council at 1 PM. It's held in, at the courthouse in media, in the council chambers. So if any or all of you, that would be powerful if all of us showed up. And you gotta be on time because just like we do here, they do public comments at their deliberative. And they may do it a little, they probably do it a little different than they do in a council meeting. But just, just being there, knowing why, while letting them know why you're there will be really good. I'm gonna try to make it myself. All right, Madam Clerk, this is your time to shine. Let's get started.
Bill number four, first reading was on October 8th, 2025. Ordinance number four of 2025, an ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, enacting new Article 513 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, as supplemented and amended, entitled Traffic Calming Measures. To establish criteria and guidelines for the installation of traffic calming measures on city-owned roadways specifically designed to reduce the speed, but not necessarily the volume of motor vehicle traffic in residential areas. Nor is the purpose to move traffic to adjoining roadways and to enact enforcement and education activities by the Chester Police Department and repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass Bill number four on its last and final reading.
I second that we pass Bill number four on its last and final reading.
Any questions or comments? I'll make the, uh, the comment. Sometimes these things are written in such a way that you really don't understand what's going on. It's about speed bumps in the city. So what we're doing is creating this policy and, and voting on a policy that will be in place for those of you who have for years asked for speed bumps. And we really don't have a process or procedure for moving them forward. So that's what this is about. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, a resolution of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Resolution Number 94 of 2025, granting preliminary and or final approval to Silver Care Senior Housing for its overall master land development plan for the development of an independent living facility with support services at 2500 West Ninth Street, Chester, PA.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? For those of you who don't know what Silver Care is, the urgent care on Ninth and, I guess around Wilson, right across from, uh, Memorial Park-ish. The old Sacred Heart that's behind the front building is that they're going to convert that into apartment buildings for seniors for assisted living, not necessarily seniors, for assisted living. And that's what this ordinance is about, just further support from the city. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, a resolution of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Resolution 96 of 2025, granting preliminary and or final approval to 742 West Front Street, LLC, for its subdivision and land development plan for the development of a warehouse development at 742 West Front Street, Chester, PA.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? For those of you who are wondering where 742 West Front Street is, it's the old Strong, help me.
Stong.
Thank you. Stong Plumbing Company Plumbing Building. It was knocked down. The, the land's been cleared. And that's where what's being designated as a warehouse is going to be built, but it's, it's, I'm... as a warehouse is going to be built, but it's, it's, I'm, I'm really troubled with the fact that it's considered a warehouse because it's going to be a lot more. It's going to be office space, a training center, that Power Home Remodeling is, is building there. Madam Clerk?
Councilors Gibson, Williams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester previously engaged the services of Mid-Atlantic Solid Waste Consultants LLC, otherwise known as MSW Consultants, to provide consulting services in preparing an overhaul of the procurement specifications for residential curbside trash and recycling services. And whereas the results of the procurement process resulted in the City of Chester awarding a five-year contract with an effective start date of January 1st, 2026, to a new solid waste hauler at a significant cost savings to taxpayers. And whereas the city seeks to continue its relationship with MSW Consultants as it seeks to onboard the new solid waste hauler, implement the terms and conditions of the new contract, assist in the distribution of 10,000 recycling carts to residents per the contract, provide support and development of a resident outreach and education plan, assistance seeking grant reimbursement under the Act 101, Section 902 program, and provide other administrative support as may be required. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby accept the September 11th, 2025 proposal of MSW Consultants at the proposed hourly rates and service fees as provided in the attached, not to exceed $19,000. Further, said amendment is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? What this basically says is that the group that helped us design the request for proposal for a new trash man for the city that will occur in, in January will be retained to help us make the transition to the new trash man that we're going to have in January. Madam Clerk?
Councilors Gibson, Williams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Council of the City of Chester authorized entering into a contract with Davis Construction on July 23rd, 2025, as the general contractor for the construction of a new public works facility, ARPA Project Number 27, at a total contract value of $4,825,353. And whereas additional work has subsequently been identified, that is required to be completed prior to construction of the building, which includes excavation and removal of approximately 275 cubic yards of contaminated soil and backfilling and compacting with clean soil and stone. Next would be removal, cleaning, and disposal of two underground storage tanks. Whereas Davis Construction has provided a formal change order, Core Dash Zero 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 One, in the amount of $83,014, to perform this additional work as identified in the attached proposal dated October 9th, 2025. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve change order number one, Core Dash Zero 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 One, in the amount of $83,014, increasing the contract value between the City of Chester and Davis Construction to $4,908,367. Further, in the event that site conditions require removal of additional contaminated soil beyond the estimated 275 cubic yards anticipated, city agrees to a unit cost of $75 per cubic yard for such removal pending review and approval of appropriate city officials and its agents. Further, that the appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute the change order upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Just be prepared to hear the name Davis Construction over the next 15 months. They're the ones who's building the Public Works Garage down on 291 and Lloyd for us. What this resolution signifies is that, you know, sometimes you have to get everything in place before you can start putting a shovel in the ground. When they put a shovel in the ground, they found some contaminated soil when it was studied and found some underground tanks. So this is a change order that's just going to add more cost to the total project. As Councilman Green said during deliberative, we should expect to see a lot more as these projects go on, and that's customary. So when you hear Davis Construction, just think of the new Public Works Garage and the work that's being done to get them a brand-new facility by the end of 2026. Madam Clerk?
And also no relation, let me just clear that.
Oh, that's funny.
Just want to let y'all know.
Councilors Gibson, Williams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize a proper city official to enter into a memorandum of understanding, known as a MOU, with the Philadelphia Union Foundation and Love.Foolball Incorporated to establish a collaborative framework to co-develop and activate a new, community-driven, safe-play space at Seventh Street Park for the construction of a new soccer court and improvements to three existing basketball courts with no substantial cost to the city. Further, it does authorize a proper city official to execute this MOU for and on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I just have one comment. In regards to the public comment that was made earlier, would it be more beneficial to the community for you to get an outline and an official breakdown of what a substantial cost would look like, so you have a number dollar amount, what that would, what that would mean for, that would help you give a better understanding of what's happening via this comment Miss Smith gave? Okay, we can help provide that so you understand what a substantial cost looks like. When we talk about a substantial cost, because I was also somebody to comment on this at deliberative, because the City of Chester owns that property, we own the soccer field that they want to rebuild, we own the basketball courts on Seventh Street, so they have to get permission from us to do any work first and foremost. If they need our help with anything, hey, we need a permit, they have to pay for that permit because we own it. The substantial cost would be the $125 or so for the permit, but it's easier if the community sees that lined out by line item, so you understand exactly what a substantial cost looks like, so you don't see reading of that vague language, and then somebody bills the community for $8,000, and it's, well, that's a substantial cost for somebody. So we can help provide a further breakdown of what substantial cost looks like with a dollar amount. So I understood your question, and I waited to this, for this to pop up to give you a further explanation of what you were looking for, Miss Smith, because I understand what you're saying. It's easy to give you a breakdown of the numbers that you're looking for, so that we don't leave any financial ambiguity.
And I just want to remind everybody that what's going to, what's going to occur on the Seventh Street Courts is, going to be amazing, transformative, I'm trying to find the right word. Like, all three basketball courts will have those painted murals on them with a new surface, improved backboard rims and all that stuff for us guys who just love playing basketball outside, which you don't see a lot of in the city anymore. And then the little soccer pitch, because it's being paid for by the soccer people, they're putting ast, I can't call it AstroTurf anymore, they're putting turf on it and improved fences. I was with a sixth grade class yesterday and told them about it. They're excited, so that's what it's all about. It's about, you know, better recreation spaces in our city for not just our kids, but for our adults. I believe, in all sincerity, that when I, right now when I ride by the Seventh Street Courts, I very rarely see anybody on them. That's going to change. That's going to change. It's going to be a, that's going to be the spot. Madam Clerk?
Councilors Gibson, Williams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas Pastor Calvin Bayatt Williams was born to the late Lister and Rachel Sugarbait Loper Williams, a proud graduate of Chester High School, class of 1975, and an honorably discharged U.S. Army veteran, Pastor Williams served both his nation and his community with equal dedication and honor. And whereas Pastor, excuse me, Pastor Williams worked at the Franklin Mint, Slaton Farms, and served the Chester Upland School District, and he brought peace, hope, and healing when needed. As a chaplain of Eastern Light Lodge Number 46, a faithful member of the Usher Board and Men's Day Committee, and later as pastor of the Temple of Brotherly Love Christian Church, his leadership radiated humility and grace. And whereas Pastor Williams' ministry transcended the pulpit, he became a spiritual first responder, called upon time and time again to lead candlelight services for victims of gun violence. In moments of tragedy, he stood firm in faith, offering comfort to grieving families and speaking life into a community in pain. His advocacy against violence and his commitment to unity were unwavering. Through his actions, he reminded us that faith without works is dead. And whereas Pastor Williams was a man who believed in Ahoi as a form of worship, he loved fishing, singing, dancing, and gathering people together in love and laughter. His barbecues became neighborhood ministries, complete with food, music, and open arms. He handed out cold water on hot days, water ice for the children, and warm meals for anyone in need. In his eyes, no one was a stranger, only family he hadn't yet met. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the installation of an honorary street sign, renaming a portion of Sproul Street at West, at West Eighth Street to Reverend Calvin Bayatt Williams Way, honoring his life as a living testimony of faith, service, and unwavering love for his city and its people. Further, it does authorize the Department of Public Works to order and install the aforementioned sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I was over in Holy City about a week ago, and I spoke to two of the senior residents who had been there for a great number of years, and they talked about the, the support that Pastor Bayatt Williams had given to their community. He was a man of valor, he was not afraid to speak up and speak out against those matters that he felt negatively impacted the community. So it is with great pleasure that I participate in the passing of this resolution to rename Eighth and Sproul Street to the Reverend Calvin Bayatt Williams Way. It is with my, it's an honor to be able to participate in this matter.
And I'll share those same sentiments. How many of you guys knew Pastor Williams Bayatt? Everybody knew Bayatt in this community. He, he was a staple. Me and him did many, many candlelight vigils together. He was always in the community, always standing up for the people, and if you wanted someone to speak out on your behalf, he was always there. He was an advocate for this city, and if you knew him, he loved Chester. He loved Chester with everything in him, and so I am extremely honored to support this resolution and name our streets. One of the things this council has been doing is renaming streets all throughout the City of Chester of people that we know and that we love, so that when we walk around this city, we drive around this city, we can see streets of people that we know and people that have impacted our generation and our lives. So to the Williams family, congratulations.
I'm, I'm going to also, with those sentiments, I shared the same sentiments exactly. I want to continue this going. I also want to, you know, share sentiments that we're giving at the last council meeting with giving people their flowers when, when they're here and when they're due. We want to continue to make things like this happen in our community. Looking around the room, I see a lot of people today that are up for, you know, if you want to have a street named after you, and you're still here doing the work and boots on the ground today, bring that to our attention because you deserve your flowers right now. You all are working hard and making a change today, so let's, let's start creating history. We're writing history ourselves. When they write about this 10, 15 years from now, we want to remember that we wrote the history books. We were part of the change. So we can start naming the streets, everybody that's getting involved. I see my man Hunt that walked in here, Art Monster, I see Devin, I see Mr. Taylor, I see business owners, Up and Down Avenue Estates, you all are working hard today. Let's put in the work and positive change to get some streets and everything like that named right now, so we don't have to wait until we have to read an obituary or anything like that. Like, we want to do it right now. So this is something that we want to continue to do.
I want to say that I am extremely proud that Mr. Bayatt is having a street named after him. That man showed up for each and every family that had some kind of grief going on. He offered prayer, and so when you say faith without works is dead, he worked his faith. And I remember even before coming home, he said, if you're going to go back, go back right. He said, take care of the people. Mr. Bayatt, I'm taking care of the people, and I'm just so glad that this is happening and that his family can rejoice in all the work that their father has accomplished. So I'm, I'm happy to be a part of the street naming for Mr. Bayatt.
Y'all installed all my thunder, so Madam Clerk?
Councilors Gibson, Williams?
Yes.
Green?
Absolutely, yes.
West?
Yes, yes, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the late Isaiah Senior and Tommy Lee Jones were considered pillars in the Chester City community, they were strong supporters of the youth in the city and helped them navigate challenges at home, school, and rough social issues throughout the community. And whereas the Joneses offered their love in multiple programs to get the youth off the streets of the City of Chester, and scores of young people would gather at their home at 502 Parker Street, where they were greeted with nourishment and unconditional love. And whereas Mrs. Tommy Lee Jones was a fierce advocate for making sure Chester youth were not overlooked nor underserved. Through her nonprofit Youth in Action Agency, she connected Chester teenagers with jobs, tutors, and college recruiters. She also organized field trips to various places outside the city to encourage young people to dream big, work hard, and make something of themselves. And whereas Mr. Ike Jones Senior also left an inedible mark on the community through his willingness to work with young people, organizing and fully sponsoring sporting events in the community, and workshops where young adults could come out and meet potential employers looking to hire Chester residents. Mr. Jones was also a longtime employee of the City of Chester. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the installation of an honorary street sign, renaming a portion of Parker Street at West Fifth Street to Ike and Tommy Lee Jones Way, honoring their lives, dedication, and love for the youth of the City of Chester. Further, it does authorize the Department of Public Works to order and install the aforementioned sign.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
My comment is that I lived, our backyards met with one another. I was on Curlin Street and Mr. and Mrs. Jones were on Parker Street, and Mrs. Jones was one of the most beautiful women And Mrs. Jones was one of the most beautiful women outward and inward. And she gave her time, effort, and energy to the youth in our community. A lot of youth would have been lost if it had not been for Ike and Tommy Lee Jones. And so to the family, thank you for sharing your mom and dad with us all of these years. And I want to say about Ike, when I first started on city council, he- I was- I've always been under Public Works, and he taught me everything that I know about the department. He and Manir Ahmed. And I'm just so grateful that we're doing this street renaming for Ike and Tommy Lee Jones. It's- they're more than deserving, and I'm so, so extremely happy. I'm not gonna cry, trying to hold back the tears [applause] because I miss them terribly. I miss both of them. And so, family, I love you, and thank you so much for sharing your mom and dad with us.
I'm gonna pull a Councilman Fred Green. How many people in the room knew Mr. Ike and Ms. Tommy? There we go. I did not know Ms. Tommy, but I got to know Mr. Big Ike because me and Middle Ike, I guess we can call ya, we were classmates back at Immaculate Heart, played basketball. And just like the dads do, my dad and his dad would be sitting in the stands together, you know, watching us play. And, you know, Ike and I, Middle Ike, have been friends ever since. I will say this, this is a really proud moment for a couple of reasons. Number one, we're naming streets for two great persons in the community. It was my vision from the beginning to start renaming these streets from people that we don't know to people that we do know. I'm really happy, thrilled beyond measure that council has been on board with this. I'm really happy to see all the submissions and applications that we're getting from the community, which is starting to create a little bit of a procedural issue in which we have to kind of figure out how to sort through all the different requests and, you know, make it as fair and equitable process as we can. But that's the kind of problem I like to have, and that's the ones that we're gonna sit down and figure out. So, really, really special moment. Did you cry? Did you really? Did you see it coming? She was close, I could feel it. And this is the first time I've heard the clerk interrupt it before she finished reading a resolution, and it happened twice, so we know we're hitting the mark here. So thank all of you out there. Thank you, council, for supporting this movement. Thank you, Public Works Department, who gets the signs together and actually puts the signs up for us. Andrew and Company. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania issued an order outlining a composition of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board. And whereas the court ordered the board will consist of five members with staggered terms. And whereas at the time of the order, a vacancy existed on the board, and the court ordered that said term was to expire the first Monday in January twenty twenty-nine. And whereas the city desires to comply with the court's order, and the board is currently organized as follows. Joan Neal, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Livia Smith, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. Wem Riley, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven. John Shelton, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Anzeammon Ahmed, January first, twenty twenty-nine. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that upon expiration of the term of Joan Neal, it does hereby appoint Isaiah Jones as a member of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board, term to expire October twenty-eighth, twenty thirty.
Make a motion. Five, four, three, two, one. All right, we didn't get a second, so that's tabled.
Resolution, whereas the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania issued an order outlining of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board. And whereas the court ordered the board will consist of five members with staggered terms. And whereas at the time of the order, a vacancy existed on the board, and the court ordered that said term was to expire the first Monday in January twenty twenty-nine. And whereas the city desires to comply with the court's order, with the board currently organized as follows. Joan Neal, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Livia Smith, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six. Wem Riley, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven. John Shelton, October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-eight. Anzeammon Ahmed, January first, twenty twenty-nine. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby reappoint Joan Neal as a member of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board, term to expire October twenty-eighth, twenty thirty.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson, Williams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
No.
All right, so that concludes the ordinances, resolutions. Great meeting. In the interest of time, because as I announced earlier, shh, come on, let's get moving, y'all. In the interest of time, we got an update on the ETA. Anything new, Councilman? Looks like it's moved up a little bit.
Uh, let's just say eleven thirty.
We're gonna be out of here by eleven-thirty. We know the hottest public comment in the room is regarding the Homecoming on Avenue of the States celebration. Someone's gonna get me the list of names on the sheet, I'm sure. Yeah, it's there. You gonna give it to me? Thank you, Mr. Brown Williams.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's why I didn't get up.
Yeah, on the agenda, it says reports from Parks, Recreation, and Facilities. I guess we didn't get word- I guess we made the decision prior to- are we- we're not having it, right? Right, we're gonna save it for the next council meeting. Oh, we still have others?
Yeah. Crystal just wanted to introduce-
Oh, you have to get to the microphone, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Mayor, I believe Nona wanted to make a quick introduction as well.
You know what, you did tell me that, and that's the scribble I don't have in front of me. So there'll be a couple of short reports. Crystal Burrell, Department of Parks and Rec.
Good morning, everybody. I'm mayor, council, my community of Chester. Real quick, I just want to give you guys an update on some events that are upcoming from the Parks and Recs Department. First, we have our Trunk or Treat October thirty-first. It's from five to eight right in the Chester City Hall parking lot. We- City Hall has partnered with Affinity Men of Honor, CMP Radio, ReWorld. So if you would like to sign up for a trunk, if you would like to donate candy, please see me. Second, we have our Veterans Day luncheon. It's actually gonna be November tenth at Chester City Hall Community Room. We have our Thanksgiving Give Back, which is actually gonna take place November seventeenth from three to seven. City Hall is also partnering with Nicoby Dean's Foundation, Everybody Eats Cafe, Amira's Catering, Nerds, Randy Washington Construction, and so many more people. We are looking to serve over a thousand families with this give back. We will be doing cold, grab-and-go pickup. We will doing hot meal in a community room, as well as mobile drop-off. So if you would like to volunteer or be a part of this give back, please see me. Last but not least, you guys have been calling and asking. Toys for Tots registration is now open until November first. So if you would like to donate additional toys, please let me know. But we are serving families with children from thirteen and under. You can get an application right here at City Hall. All adults must have an ID, whether it's your ID, whether it's your passport. You must also bring proof of your children's age and full name, whether that's a medical card or birth certificate. We need proof that they are your children and what age they are. We will be getting applications here from two to four every day, Monday through Friday. If you have any questions about these events, you can see me personally. My work cellphone is six one oh four seven nine zero four six six. You can text or call me. You can also send me email at cborrell@cityofchesterpa.gov. And make sure you guys are on our social media pages, our website. We also have a city app, so all the information is out there, but you can also come here and ask to see me, Crystal Burrell. We have a lot of events coming up, so I'm super excited about that. Thank you.
And also just want to invite everyone out to Hunts Haven is having a free haunted house on Halloween starting at seven PM, and that is the old St. James High School on East Twenty-first Street. And also really quickly, just want to honor the presence of the honorable Judge Davis, who's with us today too. Hi, Judge Davis.
Well, let me tell you something. Just listening to that report just lets me know we hired another great employee in She is absolutely crushing it.
Go, Crystal!
In Parks and Rec.
Yes!
Thank you so much. Ms. Nona Watson, who's our Director of Community and Economic Development. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
She wants to make a special announcement.
Yes, good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. Good morning, community. I am very excited to say that Community and Economic Development, we are making great strides as well. Congratulations to Parks and Recs, but we're making great strides as well. And, um-
Shameless plug, Tom, go ahead.
Yes, yes. I want to introduce to the community our new Director of Licensing and Inspections, Ms. Sakara Pearson. I'd just like to say that Sakara, she was already working within licensing and inspections. She has been doing an amazing job, and I am happy, right, to promote from- we are happy to promote from within. So I'm just gonna ask Sakara to come up. You all put your hands together again for Ms. Sakara Pearson.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Council, Mayor, and residents of Chester. I am excited to be able to have this position and to hope to turn around the unfortunate mismanagement of licensing inspection of the past years. I am dedicated and committed to the life, the livelihood, and the health and safety of the community, and that's my job. So hopefully, I can work with you, Council, Mayor, the community, to make this a better place for everybody here in Chester.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And let me just say, one of the things she said is that she's committed, and she truly is committed. I came in here on a Saturday, she was in here working. She was the only employee in here working. And so I just want to thank you for your commitment to the City of Chester, and congratulations on your new promotion.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope to be proud.
I'd also like to say that Community and Economic Development Department that's headed by Ms. Nona Watson is- they got a tough job. And it was just mentioned that there has been some issues with our LNI department. We are well aware of it, and it's been on the mend, you know, ever since we've committed to mending it. This position that she is assuming, she's filling some big shoes, but she's really gonna create how LNI moves forward in the future. There were a lot of very experienced people vying for this spot. But, you know, the decision that I have to make with regard to my directors is to trust them, because this is their departments. So this was Ms. Nona's decision to hire from within, which we want to do every chance that we get, and I did not challenge her at all on that. So this is exciting times here. I mean, this place is every day working more and more like the sixty-five million dollar business that it is. So I'm gonna clap for myself. All right, I'm gonna read all the names here. There are twelve names, and I'm reading these names because I believe- am I finished with the announcements, first of all? And the reason I forgot was my little yellow sticky wasn't where it was supposed to be. I'm gonna read all these names because I want you, if you are gonna speak on the Homecoming on Avenue of the States, I just want you to line up behind each other in the order in which I'm gonna read you, so we can take care of that topic first. Again, Councilman Green and I want to hear as much of this that we can before we roll out of here. This is public comment. That means public comment. We prefer comments. This is not a question and answer. This is not time for discussion. But for a topic that is so hot in our community, we would like to have a discussion in a venue that discussions are held. You know, town halls and things like that are usually where we do this, but, you know, if anybody calls our office, Justin in particular, and wants to schedule a time for voices to be heard in more than the three minutes that's gonna be allowed today, we're totally open to that. So I'm gonna call the names. Ralph Scott, Roland Taylor, Harry Jackson, Andrew Nelson, Zulene Mayfield, Shante Brown, Lamont Harris, Jameer Caldwell, Brown Williams, Byrd Robbins, Cheryl Watson. Mr. Saleem always closes us out, so you just hang tight, Mr. Saleem. All right, this is like lining up for a Southwest flight, right?
I don't know. Well, good morning, Mayor.
There's a running clock, so you can keep track, however far you are.
Time's up. All right, I'm here to introduce-
I'm sorry. I only know a few people that are in the line. I'm keeping the order right, so you are-
Ralph Scott.
Thank you, Ralph. Go ahead. Sorry, I stole you, get an extra two seconds or three, whatever I took out.
My name is Ralph Scott. I am here as a Public Relations Manager for the Bishop R.F. Davis Foundation Ministries. I am here today on behalf of our President and CEO, Elder Chris Clements. Some of you may know. All right, I think one person knows. Okay, Mr. Clements, I have this big, long speech here. I'm not gonna finish in three minutes, so I'm just gonna forget about it. And I'm gonna tell you about what Mr. Clements has done for me. I was a homeless veteran a year ago, year and a half ago, okay? This is someone who believed in me, and now wants me to stand up in front of you and let you know that he wants to build a Holithic Wellness Center down near Union at, what is it, twenty-three thirty-one through thirty-five Union Ave. And I am here to get the help of the council, the help of the code enforcement, LNI, and everybody that I need to talk to. So that's all I have. I understand you have some big things to deal with today. I just wanted to introduce myself, and I'll see you again shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so when you step to the mic, just announce your name.
Good morning, council members, Mayor, and members of our beloved city. I normally freestyle, but I wrote something today, so I'm trying to get everything in.
This is Roland Taylor.
And my name is Roland Taylor. I am a investor developer, owner of multiple businesses here in the downtown, better known as Overtown Chester. So I'm here before you today to discuss this past weekend's events. We had our annual homecoming, and I was the organizer of the Dual Taco Homecoming Block Party, which we've held for a couple of years now. Whereover, this year, two to three thousand people, residents, and visitors came together to celebrate pride, culture, and community. We held this event lawfully with the city's blessings, a proper permit, and at advance, coordination with both Police Commissioner and the Mayor's Office. Every part of this event was intended to show Chester in a positive light, a city that can gather- A city that can gather, celebrate, and uplift itself without incident, like we've done in the past. On October 18th, about 4:00, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, which our event was held, it was a beautiful day. Everybody was on a high of Chester High, blowing out their opponents. After the, the high school game, thousands of people came together to continue the celebration on Avenue of the States. The event was going beautifully. But toward the end of the event, police has arrived to a call that they claimed that they got a report of a fight. So, a fight. A situation that could have been managed calmly. Instead, within minutes, something that was going on for hours, peaceful, manageable, within minutes turned into chaos after the police arrived. Not because of the people, but because of the police response.
You're conscious of your time.
I am, I was the event host. I made my way to the officers to understand what was happening and offered to help by shutting down the music, speak to the crowd, facilitate a orderly closure. Before I could even finish addressing the audience, officers began deploying mace into the crowd, advancing families, elders, young people, who were all simply there to celebrate.
You have 30 seconds to get to your conclusion.
One woman was hospitalized, many other traumatized. There was no measured response, no attempt to de-escalate, no communication with event organizers only force. There, this was more than poor judgment. This was a continued betrayal of trust between the police department and the people who they're sworn to protect. We are not here to just complain. We are here to propose solutions and demand measurable change.
10 seconds, Mr. Taylor.
We would like a full, transparent investigation into the police actions that evening, reviewing all body cam footage. We would also like to implement mandatory de-escalation crowd management training for all officers, especially for community events and festivals. We would also like to establish a community police event protocol, requiring that when an event is legally committed, permitted, police communicate directly with event organizers and designated liaisons before taking, taking crowd control measures.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. I will reiterate, this is public comment. That was a public comment. But also, there's a three-minute clock up there.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning, Council, good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Uh, my name is Harry Jackson, AKA Keno, which everyone knows me by. It's gonna take more than three minutes for me to say what I gotta say, but I'm just gonna get blunt, straight to the point.
That's what we want.
With all due respect, that's all we ask out in this public, is respect. Respect to you, Mayor. No name-calling, no finger-pointing, or whatever. But you are the zookeeper. Your police officers are animals, they're animals. They run around here, they hurt, they, they beating our children up, man. I watched, what I seen that night, I watched young children get maced in their face, running to police cover for support from the police. They was macing them. They was macing these kids right in my face. I even ate a few of them kids, putting water in their eyes. I mean, water in their eyes and towels and everything, trying to aid these police officers. I almost stepped in to intervene, but one cop, he just had his hands just shaking, waiting for me to come to him. Waiting for me to come to him. You hiring animals. They animals out here, man. They animals. These are animals. And I'm telling you this from the heart. I normally don't speak like this. I normally speak with love, respect, and care for the community, the people. But these cops out here, I don't want to get into this racist thing, but it only leaves one situation. They racist. They are racist. They are, they, they show no respect to our community. They show no respect to us as black folks. I'm sorry, I gotta go there. I got one minute. Listen, I approached one officer during that, that situation. No, I'm lying. My partner approached the officer during that situation. He said, yo, why did you just, and he said, back up, back. He just wanted to ask a question. The officer just sprayed him. He turned around and put his hands up, walked away. He would walk behind, he still macing him. This is rejectulous. Somebody's gonna get hurt, somebody's gonna get killed. Because one, one guy in his 40s, he did the same thing, walked into an office and approached him, and he sprayed him. This guy was not having it. He said, I'll be right back. We talked to him out of a suicide mission. He came back, and he came back, he was strapped. I don't know if he's licensed or not, but he was strapped. That could have caused, come on now. Shouldn't nobody be that angry to have to come back? Tell him, whatever happens to me, happens. But he, he's not gonna disrespect me like that. Come on, man. Look around. They not here, they here to support us in this situation with these police that you're hiring. These guys are ignorant, they're angry. You can't even approach them. You can't even talk to them. You can't even talk to them. You say something to them, and it's, it's instant attitude. It's instant aggression. Instant aggression. Instant. And I know from this point on, you know, I'm, I'm, I've been walking straight lines for many, many, many years. And it's sad that I can't even approach a officer and say, listen, I have a question for you. Why is it... They immediately go into a rage. Immediately. Don't talk to me, I don't care who you call. I tell them I got people to hire, I don't give a F. They ignorant, man. They ignorant. Do y'all agree? They ignorant. They ignorant. So all I'm saying is, nothing but love and respect to Mika Wilson. I appreciate you reaching out to me constantly. Fred, no one reached out to me but to Mika. Blackwell, I love her to death. You gotta do something with the people y'all hiring. That's all I got.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
So I'm trying to make this fast, because I want to get through everything. But I just want to let y'all know, so I'm here to address the community. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn around, and I'm gonna face my back to you guys. It's not disrespect, but it's because y'all not my audience.
We'll take the mic with you when you turn around.
So, um, I appreciate Councilman Davis and Councilwoman Williams for your responses. And the, the key word is accountability. Now I'm gonna turn around. So, Chester...
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Give them your name.
Oh, yeah, I'm Andrew Nelson. I'm a citizen, a resident, and I live on 24th Street. All right, so I'm here to talk to y'all. So we as people, we as citizens, we, we got a lot more power.
Mr. Nelson, I'm sorry to interrupt you, and I'm not trying to take away your time.
No worries.
Give me more five. Do you mind standing behind the podium?
I don't mind at all.
Feel crowded, and I just want everybody to see you.
I'm with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm here to talk to y'all. So I need our, our people to understand that. So first of all, uh, what I witnessed for a homecoming hurt me, right? Now, me as a veteran, I understand there's a need for order and discipline. And can we all agree with that, right? When, when we call 911, we expect problems to be solved, yes? Right. Now, with that being said, the, the responses that we've seen with our police has not really been responsive to the community. And I think that that's a human result, because the community has not been involved. So what I want to talk to y'all guys, I, I handed out paperwork. And real quick, I want to, I want to pitch a civilian police oversight board, right? Now, the City of Chester is, is broke right now. We insolvent, um, we in bankruptcy, we don't have money. So this is a, a zero-cost solution, right? It's gonna be based on a volunteer board. What I want to submit to y'all is, as long as we continue to do the same thing over and over again without any kind of changes, we're gonna get the same kind of results, right? So what I, I think we gotta do is, we gotta put our power together, right? So history showed us that this has happened before. Police oversight boards have happened. And in the past, historical pattern is that the reviews get collapsed from pressure, from police unions and other external places that, that are not really beneficial from this oversight. But if we stick together and we say, we gonna dig our heels in, and we gonna put together this volunteer board, right? There's a few things that we could do. First of all, as long as we volunteering our time as citizens, can't nobody stop us. We agree with that? Secondly, we got in Pennsylvania, we got the ability to get anything on our charter changed by a referendum, right? What that means is, we have Mayor and Council collectively worked together, and we put it on a, um, an agenda to get voted on. We can bypass any kind of internal structure for a one-for-one vote. When that vote occurs, it can't get struck down no matter who gets elected. Much respect to y'all. No matter who gets elected at that time, that person that gets elected can't strike, strike down a referendum vote, right? It could be in place. So history shows that, uh, Pittsburgh has done it before. It is very successful. They have a five-to-seven volunteer board that reflects city's diversity. They review the police internal affair investigations. They recommend further investigation when it's warranted, like my brother Roland said, right? Uh, they make policy and training recommendations, because he made a recommendation that was spot-on, right? And then also, they hold public meetings for transparency and accuracy. My people, this is something we could do on our own, and we don't need a permission slip. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, now that my time is up, I, not only do I have this where I hand it out to everybody, but I have a full implementation plan that I can email to you guys digitally. I'm gonna be leaving, because I gotta get back to work, but I'm gonna make sure that my information is here and available. My email address is andrewnelson31@gmail.com. If anybody is interested in, in what I have to offer, I will email it to you, and then we can collaborate, set up a time where we could talk offline, and this committee can be established, and the oversight could be there. And then again, because at the end of the day, Mayor and Council report to the civilians, right? And then the, the police commissioner...
Mr. Nelson, you made your point.
Reports to I am...
All right, hey, let me tell you something. I thank you, because I absolutely do support what you're proposing.
Morning. Morning, Mayor and Council. Zulene Mayfield, Chair of...
Excuse me, one second, one second, excuse me. I, I would like to afford Ms. Mayfield the same respect that I would like to afford everyone. Just let her speak. Give her a three minutes of roomful of silence, just so she can address her concerns.
Oh, I'll get my three minutes.
Officially on record.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
First of all, I have a couple of things that I want to say to Mayor. I want to thank you, Mayor, and for the citywide cleanup. I want to thank you, Justin, for listening to me. I recommended to Justin that every time we do a cleanup, that there are recycling cans available. We have to start teaching our community about recycling. That's number one. Um, I think that it was a great day. Um, and noticeably, when you drove around afterwards, you could see how clean the city was. So it was very effective, and I'm glad that Circle participated in that action. Uh, number two, I want to thank you, Mayor, for the letter that you sent to Councilwoman Gualtieri of Philadelphia. Councilwoman, in support of their, her Stop Trashing Our Air Act. It is an act before Philadelphia in a committee right now to stop sending trash to the incinerator in Chester, poisoning us. I am going to ask and ask for, um, where are we standing at with the ethics policy? I don't know of many organizations that don't have one. And it's a little disheartening that there is still no vote on the ethics poly, policy for the City of Chester. Number three, contaminated soil down at that site. Um, you know I'm gonna be on it. So I hope that things are done properly. There should be proper testing soil, um, testing of the soil, both on-site and for the residents in that area. We know that anytime we disrupt soil, it becomes airborne, and that releases a contamination into our air. Now let's get to the policing. Um, I was not at homecoming. And what I saw made me quite angry. I don't care who comes in our community. You are gonna police us with the same respect that you want done in your own communities. Now, we, we want this to be a process where you are welcome, and you see us as a community that we are. We are a loving community. We are accepting community. But you will not crap on us. You will not get out of the car and cuss. I don't care what the situation is. To use profanity, you are taught de-escalation tools. You are taught these things. The general public is not. And I know it's hard. I know it's hard. So what I would like to do as Circle, I want to propose that we have a sit-in meet, okay? First, initially with a couple of people from the community, some of the administration of Chester Police Department, and some of the younger officers. We have to start forging these relationships. Um, it's different when cops walk the beat. They knew us. We knew them. So that would be the first step that I would like to do. And Circle will take care of it. We'll have a little breakfast, initially with small people. You know, maybe 10 or 15 people. Let's start the conversation. The first conversation that our kids have with officers should not be them getting cussed at or being maced, because this community will rise up against that, okay? So let's start it. And Mayor, I'm gonna reach out to you, and let's see if we can facilitate that meeting. All right? Thank you.
Good, great, thanks.
Well, I come over y'all behalf today because ain't nobody been to my house yet. From the city council...
This is Mr. Brown Williams.
Yeah, Brown Williams. Ain't nobody been to my house yet. Them police killed my grandson right in front of my eyes. I tell that man, I said, oh, shoot that damn boy. He slammed his head, busted. He don't care. I think that the same cops hit that boy down on Curling Street. I think that cop from, from out there by the school insurance hill. I don't know how he get down here, but you go to any police force, they don't want him, because he trouble. And something got to be done. Saturday night, I bring them kids over here. Hell, them cops missed them chilling, no sooner than get there. Two of them had to went to the hospital, I thought, really? Because that damn thing was burning their eyes up and soaked. They got asthma and stuff. If y'all don't stop these cops, these white cops. Well, it's number one, some of the black guys should be with some of them white cops. They not with them. I don't understand that. Ever since I've been in Chester, I've been in Chester 66 years, and they always mix them up. Back then, Hammond and Jack Dinkrelli and all of them used to mix them. Then had them all in this gang, all in that gang. You can't run a city like that. Because them fellow don't give a damn about the people in Chester. And it getting worse. Your mind will, naming has to come, and be real about it. They don't care nothing about Chester. If y'all don't speak up, we gonna be lost. They try to put us back in Jim, Jim Crow time. You don't want to see that. No, you want to move forward. For your people and your children can speak up about you. Say what you done in life and you was in here. But if you ain't done nothing, you ain't want nothing. We got opportunity to do things. But they still won't speak up for our children. Another thing, down there by my house, while I'm talking, they smell that human waste. They had two or three guys down there measuring. I don't know what they measuring for. That's why I come over here today to ask y'all. They been measuring water company and another company. And, and they had a sniffle. I asked them what that fuck is, I live here. They wouldn't tell me. Now, the next Saturday, that was Friday, Saturday them white folks had to move out of there. Some of y'all should know why they move out there. Two houses them white folks move out in less than 24 hours. So something must have was dangerous there. Because you can walk on that corner. I had the, one of the top boss from the water company. You can smell human waste when you walk over the man cave. So y'all need to check on that. I inspected what's down there, I don't know him. I know him when I seen him. I stopped and asked him, he told me to get the hell out of his way. That's some kind of way for I inspected to say. But he supposed to be telling me what's going on down there. That's why I stopped him and asked him. That's why I stopped him and asked him. Because I cleaned up on that corner when he needed it. Down in the back, I carry one guy back there and show me that man over cap back there. They didn't even much know nothing back there. We could on cap it where the water can go out on the inner Hayes Street.
Ten seconds, Mr. Brown.
You could have the rest.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Brown.
Councilwoman is calling you.
Mr. Brown, that's Sixon Hayes, right down by Sixon Hayes at the corner there.
Yeah, that's Sixon Hayes.
Where that smell is coming from?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can smell it there.
Okay. We'll have Public Works go there today.
Okay.
Okay.
Because that's rough. Young people knocking on doors at one after one-thirty because I won't be back there after one-thirty.
Okay.
Yeah. And I show them different spot down there because I have cleaned up around there.
Okay.
But number one, y'all must get them policing on. Because somebody gonna die in this city.
First order of business.
I could talk. All right, so I'm gonna make my point real quick too, so I can get through it. So, my name is Jamir Caldwell. I'm here on behalf of the people of Chester who are tired of silence when it matters the most. So, as everyone already stated, at Chester High's Homecoming on Avenue of the States, we saw police macing innocent people, kids, women, and bystanders who were trying to help break up those articulations as well, while we're all out here just celebrating. And now, I could say the only one who acknowledged it, thank you, Councilwoman, Tamika Gibson, and thank you, Shaquion Davis. Wherever you are today, stay like that. Because I want people to know, when I call y'all out, it's out of love. A lot of y'all take too much of this personal and y'all work for the city. So again, I'm here and I'm gonna speak for the city because y'all got in those seats and that's a public job. So when you say things like you're not going to acknowledge, you're not going to acknowledge, you know, negativity, honest conversation comes in all forms. So if you define it as negative, that's your problem. But when we're having honest conversations, we gotta have them, whether that's uncomfortable or not. Let me give that to my screen. Now, I want to say this because we throw peace, love, and unity festivals, right? And that right there is symbolism, because we truly know in reality, there isn't a lot of that when it comes to the police in our community. So what steps are being taken to make sure our community can celebrate without being attacked by the same people sworn to protect us? I also want to say, two of you are up for reelection, sitting up there up for reelection November the fourth, okay? And sitting up there silent ain't enough for me no more. A lot of y'all got by because the community wasn't woke. My thing is, when it comes to stuff like this, I don't want to see nobody sitting up there silent. I want to see what you think about it. I'm not going to give you time to sit there and think, go home and think on it. Tell us right now what you think about it. What you gonna do? Because silence from leadership is complicity. And if our leaders can't speak up for us, then we need to elect new leadership. And we will do that. Now, we talk about solutions, so I got a couple of solutions, okay? Because council can schedule a special hearing where the police chief and officers involved must answer public questions about what happened. Community members can also be allowed to testify, create a public record of the event, and ensure it's not brushed off privately. Council can also pass a resolution or make a formal request that all relevant body cam dash cam footage from the day, from that day be released to the public. If the footage shows unnecessary force or improper behavior, that evidence becomes the foundation for disciplinary or legal action. Transparency builds trust and it's the city's right to demand it. So city council and mayor, I'm sorry, city council and the mayor can't discipline officers directly. That's up to the police chief. Police chief, yes, okay. So, what they can do, oh, and internal affairs. But they absolutely can force investigations, demand transparency, withhold budgets, rewrite policies, and create systems that prevent this from happening again. Council can pass a resolution or make a formal request that all, well, sorry, I wrote that twice. I already said that part. But I say all in all, we want better for our community and if y'all are our leaders, all of y'all. Because some of y'all refuse to acknowledge me and some of y'all refuse to know that I'm up here fighting for the community. So if you're not gonna talk to me, it's not gonna stop me from talking about you. Thank you.
This is James Brown talking right there. All right, so my name is Mr. Robinson, right? And I'm here just to speak on what I saw this weekend. Couple things came to mind. There was no sign of de-escalation. I feel like the police has cited a riot. I saw them spraying everyone. I saw a girl lay on the ground for maybe twenty-five minutes. No one rendered any aid. They were too busy chasing the people down the street, chasing behind them with the mace, screaming and yelling. And it looked like, like the guy said, he was like, they just wanted to attack. It's like they were, they knew they were getting off at ten, so at about quarter to ten, they just went crazy. And it wasn't fair. And one of the things I did notice is when they didn't render any aid, I would think, when we already know there's gonna be two thousand people down here, that there would have been one ambulance, you know, afoot in case something went wrong. We waited forever for ambulance to came. I thought the girl died, honestly, right? And I understand that, and I don't want this to be a dog and pony show, yeah, they had a big problem down here, we gonna have to get the guys together just to let them, you know, get some, get something off their chest. It's bigger than me getting something off my chest. When I see people that look like me and when I see people out there look like my son, I get very passionate and I get very upset and emotional because that could have been my son. I see about eleven white officers out there, all running angry, and one black guy that makes them look right because he's with them. It was ridiculous what was going on. There was, there wasn't any control. The guy said, "Well, we can stop it." But how about if you're in Philadelphia and there's a fight over here, you don't shut the whole Phillies parade down? If there's something going over there, you don't shut the whole Eagles parade down? They didn't even, they just, they just started spraying, like it's, like I was in Georgia with my mom when I was a kid. At night, there's some cockroaches in those kitchens, right? And you go in there and spraying, and that's, that's exactly what it was. And if I, and listen, I'm gonna tell you, if it was five hundred years ago, I see how it went down. You know what I mean? A couple guys came in, it didn't look like me, right? And they came in and said, "Hey, how you doing?" And then they just destroyed every effing thing that was going on down there. You yourself, Mayor, you're proud of the football team, you know the legacy of basketball? You see that pride you had when you spoke about it? That's what two, three thousand people had. They had pride in their community and themselves. And we were having a blast. Okay, one cop said, "Well, it was underage drinking." Well, where doesn't that happen? Another cop said, "But look what they did to the place." When are you gonna get two thousand people together and not have a bunch of trash? Which Roland did it, an exemplary job cleaning up that night. Those guys was out there at three in the morning cleaning up. Me and my son were out there, you know, till two, well, one-thirty, something like that. But, and that's what I say, you got, we have to be respected as a people. I mean, you guys look like me, treat me like you want to be treated. I'm not gonna go over, but you gotta love us and we love you. That's how it goes.
Hello, my name is Shante Brown. I don't have much because I just decided to come this morning. I wasn't gonna come at all, but I just felt the presence making me come to speak for the mothers of the children that were out here, even though some feel as though they shouldn't have been out here, but I'm just speaking. Learn how to deal with the consequences of your actions, speaking on the City of Chester and to the police officers that were accountable for the situation that happened just up the street from here. They want you to act like animals so they can treat you like animals. They are hired to attack, not crowd control.
One second.
Understanding you're intoxicated and still careless. The sober, the sober was trampled and run over.
Excuse me. I got it. Underage drinking.
I'm pretty sure a lot of y'all did that, but I was fifteen years old, excuse me. I was fifteen years old when I was shot in the City of Chester on Seventh and Barkley and I seen a police car coming down the street and I ran towards the car, but I was nervous to run towards the police officer because of not understanding what he may do to me and he may think I'm a threat, even though it was a shooting incident that I was a part of. Skip to the basics. Why were there outside police presence in the City of Chester? How come they didn't hire any bikers or any inner-city security? You never see, you never see Chester cops at really events or even Woodland. Why come here for overtime? Why come here for overtime? The overtime was good. Why come here for overtime? The overtime was a good time for abuse in your power. No power over me because my God is higher. Most of y'all are just a badge and a gun. None of y'all take the job serious and none of y'all have hearts. If you didn't want to work that night, couldn't you make the cop call ten forty-two to end your shift? Ten thirty-three, need immediate assistance? Eleven ninety-nine, officer needs help? Did y'all make any of them calls that night? I'm pretty sure y'all didn't. Did y'all call for twenty, officer needs assistance? No. Thirty, officer need help or emergency? No. Did you do code one or code three? No, you did not. And I'm pretty sure after the time, ten twenty-six, all clear. I'm pretty sure y'all made that call a little late.
My name is Cheryl Watson and I stand before you as a concerned parent. The incident that I'm about to talk about happened on Fifth Street. It happened, it spilt over after Avenue of the States. My son was getting out of his car and the officer whose face has been posted on Facebook is the officer that attacked my son, basically. He got out of his car and as soon as he got out, he was handcuffed, just getting out of a car. My son had a bottle of, it was alcohol was in it, but it was empty. And what was in the bottom of it was pineapple pieces. When they saw the bottle, one of the officers hollered, "Crack." Tell me when the crack looked like that? If you, as a police officer, I'm quite sure you're trained to know what drugs look like. So when they, the officer was getting ready to release him, the other officer hollered, "Crack," and they put him in handcuffs, uncalled for. Then they wanted to search his car. For what? My son, who knows the law, said, "No, unlawful search." He was eventually released, but I'm concerned because as a black mother with a black son and we know what happens to our black men, this is ridiculous. Ridiculous. My son doesn't have a record at all and that's when they released him. But he should not have to endure such attack, period. Something needs to be done, especially with the officer whose face has constantly been posted on Facebook. He's not for us. He's against us.
Good morning, beautiful people, Mayor, Council. Chef Lamont, how y'all doing? Back in the, back in the eighties, we used to have two officers that used to walk the beat, Officer Mancini and Officer Floyd. And they used to interact with the community and the community interacted with them. This the problem that we have. There is no police interaction. They do not come out and talk with us so they get to know us and we get to know them. Have we, have training in these cops, these first cops, has become out to get academy to be B cops? That's something that I opposed when I ran for mayor, that we have B cops. So they get to know the community and the community knows them. This would not have been a problem had they known the community. It's too many officers that are being hired that don't look like us and are not from the city. See, Chester has a stigma that it's some type of battle zone and it's not. I done went around the world several times, wherever I go, always represent C pride worldwide trademark. Everywhere I go, where you from? I'm from Chester. I'm from Chester, PA. And I think that if we say we are C pride, that we need to show pride in how we treat our people. We need to make sure that our cadets who are coming out the academy know the people. I think they need to learn to walk the beat in every single neighborhood and get to know the people. And the people get to know them that they weigh that we have decorum with one another. Just having someone coming out and just feels though they scared. If you're scared, dude, this is not the job for you. Because I'd be damned if I was in a foxhole with one of you scared rabbits and it gets our kill. There are good police officers. One of the good, when a good police officer is gonna say something to the bad police officers who are doing wrong by us. Because if you're just not saying nothing, you're complacent of the problem that's going on. And I just want y'all to know, I have a lot of respect for the police. The police have come to my house and eat at my barbecues because I invite them because that's called community relations. So when you come to my house and eat, you're coming as a police officer to know each other. And I tell the police officers, if you see me something, do something wrong in the street, do your job, but still come to the barbecue. And I mean the whole island. Lastly, I'd like to say, one of them street signs, yup, yup. This November the twenty-seventh is my annual holiday meal. If you'd like to contribute, please contribute. I've been doing this for the last fifteen years over at the train station. I give out a free meal to anyone, not have to be homeless, but anyone who want to eat. The college students who couldn't make it home, who want to come down, get a plate, fine, we give out clothes, toiletries, and everything. Also, when I do go out of town to my humanitarian missions, I do represent Chester to the fullest. I will not tarnish my city's name. That's all I have to say. Y'all have a beautiful day.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm getting all kind of points and whispers and everything. I want to thank the community for coming out today to express yourselves. You did it in a respectful way. We heard all of your comments as the mayor and being someone who hasn't had a response to this weekend, it's because I'm gathering information. But let's just start with where it all began. Roland came to me and says, "Hey, I want to have an event on Avenue of the States for homecoming." The response was immediate, yes. And then I put the people together who's gonna put the event together. There's planning, there's discussions, there's permits, there's this, there's that. Listen, I've been in this community a long time. I will constantly fight for Chester because of the fact that whenever there's a large crowd, there's never an incident. I don't care where we go, what we do. We love each other, we respect each other. It was even said in some of the comments, as stuff started to break out, people within the crowd stopped it because that's not the kind of space that they want to be enjoying. Now, let's talk about the space. Avenue of the States. Roland will attest and everybody else who has requested events to happen on Avenue of the States. My first response is, why don't we move it over a block to Edgemont Avenue? There are no businesses, there is more room. But I respect the people who ask and they usually, you know, I usually defer to Avenue of the States. It's quite obvious that for a crowd that size, Avenue of the States really isn't appropriate. But there's a lot of things that weren't appropriate and you guys have brought up, you know, many of them. We are gonna be sitting down, we are looking at body cam, we are looking at evidence, we are looking at policing, we are looking at, you know, next time when this comes around, what do we have to do in pre-planning so that in, in post, like we are now, we don't run into this again? We want to have a good time as a community. We do things different here in Chester and to be quite honest with you, I'm looking, I'm that dude who will take a blind eye to this and that as long as everybody comes home safely at night. That's what it's all about for all of us up here. When I was first on council, I don't think I was on a couple months, that's about three years ago, there was a resolution that hit our desk that we had, that we were asked to vote on. And it was for a particular business to have permission to apply for a liquor license on Avenue of the States. It didn't list who the business was, it didn't list who the business owner was. And that was my issue, so I voted no because there was no information, there was no pre-meeting. Who, what's this about? What's it for? After I said no, the business owner magically popped up and says, "Hey, that was my business. I wanted to, you know, apply for a liquor license for, you know, the restaurant that I'm looking to open." And it was a steak restaurant. I'll be honest with you, I have Merlot with my steak, I'm not gonna drink iced tea. So I would have been in favor if I knew what it was about. But even before then, I would have said, "Does the community want to be drinking down on Avenue of the States?" And it's not my decision. Do you want this to be a Bourbon Street? If so, let's create an environment where Bourbon Street can happen. Bourbon Street's been going on in New Orleans for who knows how many years. And they manage that, you know, quite well. No one's ever answered that question for me, but the actions of our community indicate that they really want this to be a party spot down here, you know, when parties pop off. I don't object, we just have to be prepared for that. It's time?
Yes.
Okay. It's time. So I'm glad I got, got, got a opportunity to make these remarks. It was Andrew who said, "We're gonna have a hearing." He wants to have a hearing. That's what we're gonna do. It won't be a hearing per se, but a listening session so that all the stuff can come out and we can discuss how we're gonna do this better next year. To that point, and I'm, we're gonna have, yeah, Mr. Salim's gonna be our last, last, he's gonna be our last public comment, but before he comes up, we're gonna have our Commissioner come up and address.
Hi.
No, let's just get through this. Thanks, Kim. I'm sorry. Commissioner, the ball's in your court. You have the same three minutes as everyone else. Unfortunately, I'm gonna have to see your comments on video when it's recorded because my councilman has drugged me out of here because of a very important meeting. It's in your hands, Depp. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, everybody. First and foremost, just sitting in here, I see we still have some growing to do. We still got some room for improvement. I have been for 22 years encouraging people who look like me to join the police force. Everybody, I'm talking about, I stop people everywhere. We talk about the color of an officer's skin when they respond. But if, while I have your attention, maybe somebody can tell me why it's frowned upon for African-American boys and girls to be encouraged to go into law enforcement, to police their own community. So you will see people that you know, you will be familiar with the, uh, community. You'll understand the difference in the gray areas of law and just situations in the community. So before I start about Saturday, let's talk about how we can approach that and how we can affect change. How we can change our own police department, how we can encourage young boys and girls. Because it's been said, you'd, I'll be a police officer, but not in Chester. Why not? That's where your grandma lives? That's where you went every summer? So we're going to get through the, the murkiness of all of this, but let's touch on that first. Let's touch on what we can do better as a community. That's me including myself. This isn't about clicks, likes, politics. This is about what do we want for our community? What do we want for our police department and what do we want to look, what it to look like? So, um, yesterday I received two citizen complaint forms regarding an incident that occurred near Sixth Street, Avenue of the Estates, specifically in the area of Taco Doo. The incident involved Chester police officers and members of the public in attendance. All citizen complaint forms are taken seriously and are investigated thoroughly. This includes reviews of body camera footage, police reports, witness statements, victim's statements to ensure a full and fair assessment. To provide context, um, I worked the Chester homecoming. It was a beautiful day, beautiful event, everybody was out there. The officers that were from outside the county, they were requested to assist. Because if you don't know, we don't have the manpower to really man something like that of that magnitude and have officers on the street. So these are officers that we work with all the time. They didn't make any decisions while they were there. If you were there and you saw me running back and forth, because any issue that came up, they called me on the radio and I went directly because I am from Chester. So I didn't leave it to anybody else to say, "They did this and they did that." They were basically backup to support, to make sure everything went off well. And it did. It did till maybe around 3:00. And we saw the shift in the crowd. And it's maybe, without exaggeration, maybe 300 teenagers in groups of 20 and 30. And they start racing back and forth, fighting, pushing, shoving, cursing, causing a disturbance. So at that time, all the officers on location, we decided, hey, we're going to make a change. We're going to force them down on the Milken Street because by now it's official, homecoming is over. It's over. It's not safe anymore. We have people here in the parking lot having a good time, but we have a core of kids who came up there to do one thing, same thing they do every day at the let out at Chester High. Same thing, same people. The fact that some of the officers from Chester, including Captain Morgan, myself, and School Resource Officer Taylor were there, we're familiar with them. So we're chasing them in crowds so we know who we're supposed to be looking at. And there were several fights and there were, um, issues where people in attendance who helped us all day long squash disagreements, broke up fights. That's the C pride way, right? C pride, okay. So, let's go on. To provide context, Chester police officers were faced with a large, fast-moving and unpredictable crowd with estimates of up to 2,000 individuals, many of whom at various times were running towards officers. There's no doubt that this was a highly stressful, volatile condition requiring officers to make split-second decisions based on training and safety, just not for them, but for everybody in attendance. It should also be noted that during these interactions, because they were there a few times, it wasn't just one fight, they were running from fight to fight, as has been reported, okay? During their inter- interaction, several individuals attended to grab officers' equipment, including tages and handcuffs. And there were also reports of officers being kicked and punched in the course of performing duties. These are serious offenses and not only jeopardize officer's safety, but also escalate tensions in an already dangerous situation. Prior to the event, agreed-upon conditions were established between the Chester Police Department, the city, and the event organizer, Mr. Roland Taylor. As a part of the agreement, Mr. Taylor was to provide adequate private security and police would only be present as requested. These conditions were intended to reduce the need of law enforcement engagement unless necessary. In light of this situation that escalated, I must now ask, was that security properly provided and enforced as agreed regarding the officer's use of force, particularly the use of OC spray, commonly referred to as mace? It is important to understand this action through the lens of a use of force continuum. This framework guides officers in applying only level of force necessary to manage a threat. In large rapidly shifting crowd situations, OC spray is one of the least intrusive options available. It is non-lethal, temporary, and allows for crowd control without resorting to more aggressive physical engagement. It is favored in situations where physical resistance or danger is escalated, but deadly force is neither necessary nor justified. With this said, I'm not here to sign blame or justify every action of every police officer on location that night. That'll come out with the investigation. But I must be clear, because I don't know if everybody knows this or not. Calls for violence, including social media posts to say, "Kill them all," and referring to the police officers? Because I'm them. I'm them. Kill them all? That's reckless, it's dangerous, and it's entirely unacceptable. These kinds of statements don't help our relationship with the community. These kinds of statements don't promote justice. They don't incite further discussions and sit downs. That's not what that says. That's not what that says, and it risks people's lives. So now, because I am the officer that people walk up to. I am the people that, who, I am the person that engages with any and everything. It doesn't matter what time or day. So am I them? Because I need to know if I'm them. And though there were predominantly white officers on that location, if we had six officers, if you said you saw 11, those were from outside agencies who heard the alarm and came running. That's what that was. But for me, Saturday was not about race. It was about respect. It was about public safety. Can I please finish? Thank you. And mutual accountability, that's for all of us. I'm not saying that everything that was done on that day was right, but it takes two. I want you all to take into consideration that there was a lot of drinking going on that day. Some underage stuff, and like everybody said, that goes everywhere. But we're going to paint the whole picture. We got to paint the whole picture. You had underage drinking from all day long, kids on drugs, kids showing off, the same behavior that they display every day after the high school lets out or any high school you want to say in the city. This is what they do. This is what they do. It's the responsibility for all of us. It's shared. This is not something that, and I know all I heard today was the police, the police, police. And if I had to say, I've seen some of the body cam footage. And a girl also told the police officer, "I'm on whatever you want, what you got, I got." Just asking you to leave. Just asking you to leave. We don't have to compare who got what, just leave. It is shared, the responsibility is shared in our actions, our words, and our leadership. Whatever the final outcome of this investigation, it will be guided by facts, not speculation or emotion. Until then, I ask that we all reflect on what it means to build a safer, more respectful community together. And if, in parting, I would like to say, when we did, um, in the homecoming, the official homecoming, the idea was first to run from group to group, class to class. Hey, it's over, it's over. But I gave the microphone to Coach Bell. And Coach Bell was so eloquent and he thanked everybody for coming. And he let them know it was over. And everybody went home. So Mr. Taylor said he didn't have a chance to speak that night. But I think on Saturday, his voice could have changed everything. His voice could have made things, it could have been a different outcome if we would have heard his voice on that microphone like we did Coach Bell. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question.
Your entertaining question?
No, I was talking to you.
Okay. Thank you. We're not going to have that. We're not going to have that in my meeting.
She said that she wasn't addressing any...
Okay.
It can't be an open forum.
Any altercation, no.
Okay, that's okay.
Excuse me, ma'am. Thank you for your comments.
Well, she wasn't entertaining your question, ma'am.
Commissioner.
No, I said she wasn't entertaining your question.
Order, please. Are you finished with your report?
Yes, I am. I have a question. Um, just for transparency's sake, because this is important for the community to know. How many police officers is the City of Chester required to have under, by law?
Required to have by law?
On staff at any given time.
Um, well, if you're talking about daily, um, the mandatory minimum is five.
Okay. How many police officers do we have in the City of Chester right now under our administrative payroll?
Fifty-five? Fifty-five.
Fifty-five officers in total? I'm, I'm doing for clarity sake.
That's from start, that's from start to finish, fifty-five.
Fifty-five police officers in the City of Chester in total, under administrative payroll.
Yes.
The City of Chester pays fifty-five. How many, how many police officers does the City of Chester need to have?
A hundred and five.
A hundred and five, which means the City...
That's, that's wishful, that's me just being wishful.
I appreciate the wishful thinking. Concrete number so the community can understand. How many police officers would it take and require for the community to be policed in the way that we deserve? How, what would be the number for that? Because we can quantify everything.
Yes, equality. It's more than just a number, it's equality. But in that quality, it also comes with pay, it comes with respect. It just comes from the whole picture. It's not just, hey, I want to be a cop, a police officer in Chester. It's about being from Chester and not being made to feel like you got to pick or you got to decide who you want to be. The support has to continue. You know, just being from Chester, and a lot of people, they can contest this. They're told, oh, you're different, you're changing. Well, I have to be. I have to be. I have a different responsibility. So I can't be the same person or do the same thing that you would do or that we used to do. So it's about quality.
I agree. I think we have quality here in this community. I definitely do.
Are you finished, Councilwoman? Did you have any questions?
I was just saying, I would, and I would not open it up to, uh, open forum.
No, we're not.
Right, because, um, what the mayor had said before he left was that we were going to have a forum where the community could come back together and we talk beyond a three-minute period.
And I, Ms. Mayfield, I think that's a great idea, the sit-down. Um, that's always encouraged when we get new officers, they sit down. We take them to different, um, business owners and we do it with the chaplains. And I think it's very important that they know who they're going to be policing. You know, they stand up here and they give these speeches. Those speeches don't mean anything if you don't really mean it.
Do we still have the, um, community policing where, um, police officers go out? I know some of the police officers have gone out to various communities and gotten to know some of the people in the area where they patrol.
That's all officers, they should do that. That's a part of their job.
I know that was a program that we always had.
No, that's a part of your duties. You are supposed to get to know your community.
Right.
That's a part of it. It doesn't, it's not necessarily a program, but that's a part of your onboarding. It's encouraged.
Onboarding, okay.
Um, I have one more comment. Mr. Jones, do you mind coming to the podium? You know, no, he's not, he's not speaking. I'm bringing this opportunity to address a comment that was made. She would like me to address it. We've been having meetings, so I would like to address it so the community understands what's going on.
You're done with me?
I'm done.
Mr. Saleem? Yeah. Um, let's, Mr. Jones, we're going to have Mr. Saleem come up because he had signed up and then you. Okay, and that's it. Okay? Mr. Saleem? Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Is it still morning? Okay.
No.
Yes, um, my name is Amin Abdou Saleem. I live 240 Patterson Street in Chester. It's, I'd just like to say, it's good seeing all you here. And certainly it's good, I would say it's to our advantage to be able to ventilate, ventilate every so often, you know, to get this out. And I'm not the one to resolve the problem like, but the mayor, he offered that. I may comment at the end here. The problem, Inshallah, God's willing, I, I'd like to speak on the problem. This problem I was passing, you know, in my own home, trying to see what's a good solution and where we at. First of all, we want to tone this down. We want to tone it down. And, um, where we at is in time here that God said, if you will, and let's go with God, if you will, just for a moment here. God said, uh, "Oh, oh ye sun, oh ye, uh, heaven and earth, come ye, uh, together." So this is what's happening. The heaven and earth are coming together. And God also said that, "Do you not know that the heaven and earth was once one?" So knowing this dynamic, this great, uh, word that our Lord has given to us at this time, we want to work with that, we want to work with that. This is above everything, all of it, the other stuff is just down here that we're going to have to, you know, deal with that comes out of its source. Okay. So he said, "Did you not know that the heaven and earth was once one? Oh ye heaven and earth, come ye, uh, together." What, the issue here is when we come together, some want to come together in this way and some want to come together in that way. Now, this is obvious. And some want to come together on what they want to come together, what they know or what they feel. And some want to come together on what they know, what they feel. We want to come together on what God, God said, the true reality, truth. Some want to come together on, uh, die gel, uh, AI, foolishness, you know, Inshallah, step for law. So, Inshallah. So you've got two people...
Mr. Saleem, your time is, is out, but you can finish that point.
Oh, it wasn't, as they say, I know it goes so quickly when you have it, well. So I, I hope, let me get to this. This is going to be with us until we get aware, you know, off to, through... So, I, I hope, let me get to this, is this gonna be with us until we get away, you know, off to, through all of this? So, so, so the bottom line is, you know, Prophet Muhammad said, if you will, he said, it is, has been revealed to me that your Lord and my Lord is one Lord. One Lord. So, so this is very, uh, timely information here, and we get through all this here. This is, uh, certainly, it is whatever, we have to get through it. That's the bottom line. And this is how we get through it.
Thank you, Mr. Saleem.
Yeah, so, uh,
Mr. Saleem?
Yes, I'm, I'm trying to get my things together. Yeah, but, uh, you know.
We want Mr. Jones to have time to come up from State Rep. Carol Kazeem's office.
Hold it, let me get down, let me get down.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going, but let me get down.
Thank you.
But don't push me away like that, if there's a problem.
I'm sorry.
I was, so, so, so thank you, my sister.
I'm sorry.
That we can, you know, tone down and, and, and this come upon us in a good way that we can get on to.
Thank you, Mr. Saleem. Mr. Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Jones, we are, we are going to conclude this meeting. Um, however, I was in your position a few years ago, and I would never bring somebody from a different office up without respecting your role and your position. I've been in constant communication with State Rep. Carol Kazeem, and she would like me to bring some things and to, uh, put some things on official record today. And I have her permission to do so. But you are an employee of hers, and you're here. So, I wanted you to stand up, and, you know, I want to acknowledge that you were here.
Okay, I appreciate that.
And of course, I try to give everybody the utmost respect, that comes first, for sure. To go onto official record, um, I did a study with the Commonwealth, and we determined that the City of Chester needs a hundred police officers at minimum to officially, effectively and officially police the community. That's coming from State Representative Carol Kazeem, that's officially on record. Like I said, I just want to put some things on record for people in the community, right?
Absolutely.
Secondly is to Ms. Zuleen and to Mr. Brown. Um, I communicated with you all both via email, I'm not sure if you've seen it, but we, I, I've, I personally have set up a email, a, a meeting with the police officers and the members involved. Let Mr. Brown know, my heart goes out to his family, he has not been ignored, and I love to make sure that this meeting happens as soon as possible. Let both of them know on record that I'm, I am spearheading that initiative. Again, that is coming directly from State Representative Carol Kazeem. She let me know she couldn't be here today because she's trying to help, uh, members get food in the community with the SNAP benefits cuts and different things like that. As I'm putting all this official information on record, this is what collaboration looks like, talking to our state official, state representative, who handles state business, who holds her own meetings, who also talks to the Police Department. It's important to talk to other, other elected officials and bring everybody to the table. So, I don't want you or Ms. Mayfield, because she addressed you all specifically, like I said, to feel as though that you're not being heard. That's what I wanted to say. Not anything negative or combative, that's not what I'm here for. And to the community, I just want to let y'all know. Thank y'all so much for coming and voicing y'all concerns.
Absolutely.
Please do not stop. Uh, you, you have my full support, and I'm, I'm looking forward for the conversation to continue. That's all.
Are there any comments from you, Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes, I am so godly proud that our community, for the first time, has come together as a unit. And like I said earlier, if there's any issues that are going on, you can bring them to me, because I'm gonna take them where they need to go. I stand with this community a hundred percent. And I will always be on the side of what's right, no matter who it is.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And on, for myself, um, I don't say a lot because I wait to get the reports from the police, Commissioner Blackwell, and also others. You know, we are looking at, uh, body cam footage and, um, holding meetings behind closed doors that when we come with you, get with you, the community, and have this public, um, interaction, then we'll have more to say, and then we'll be able to hear more from you. Okay? I thank you, Roland, and Izakino, who had, um, submitted your reports to Commissioner. That's what you do. You know, you get the process started. Now, all of us, I've been in this community for a long time, so I don't have to prove myself to anybody. Most of you who know me know that I care and the work that I do in this community. I do work that you don't even know about, because the Bible speaks about those persons who do things for people and advertise it. I don't have to advertise, I just get the work done. And I support my community, I love the community, I want you to be safe, but I also support the men and women who are out there, you know, making sure our community is safe. We have to support each other. So, we'll get together, all of us, um, have the intention that we're going to make sure that we have another pub, a public meeting where there's no three-minute limit. We'll all be able to get up and say what we have to say, and bring along whatever evidence or anything that you have for the Commissioner and her staff. We, we want you to do that, we wanna hear from you. So, thank you very much. Are there any comments from our directors?
Ms. Garner, you're a director, you had a comment earlier. Would you like to come up? I would like to hear what you have to say, but I'm not conducting this meeting, but.
Yes, you are.
I just like, I just like to hear what you have to say. I don't want anybody to feel dismissed respectfully.
I wanted to first congratulate, um, Baya for his seat, I mean, his, um, sign, because I've witnessed and, uh, felt what he has done. In addition to Mr. Ike Jones and Ms. Tom Ali, they're at 502, and my family was at 501, Parker Street. And, um, they were a safe place and a belt for my husband when he was a kid growing up. And he had the option of going left across the street on Parker Street and going into the, uh, projects and getting involved in some stuff, where he had the choice to go across the street to Ms. Tom Ali and Mr. Ike's house and get some food and get some chastisement and get, get some studying done. And he is, uh, living testimony of them and their unwavering support and love, um, that they've given. And they have given him confidence. And, um, even up to the end, when Mr. Ike was leaving, he would come holler at him. And I just wanted to recognize them. And I also wanted to tell people that, um, don't put a stigma on someone being a police officer. My grandson was at the table this weekend, and he was talking about popo. Popo, he's eight years old. And he described them as the popo, they're crazy, right? So, we had to have a deep conversation with an eight-year-old, because in his mind, police are bad. And we have people in this city that could and should be police officers. Why not encourage them to come out and be a part of this positive change? It's not a bad thing, you can have a very good, uh, be able to take care of your family, you know? It, it's not just, it's something to be proud of. I, I, we see that there are different people policing, but they're applying. They're applying, and I just wanted to encourage us to have a different conversation with these young people going forward. If they're able and they're qualified, let's talk to them so that we can make change instead of the complaining. I, I totally understand the, the have to complain when it gets out of hand, but I also wanna tell you, please stop making a stigma for these kids and encourage them to be part of the change. They might be and may be part of what is going to be positive in, in, um, policing our city. It, it's just a shame that the young kids, like as young as eight years old, look at it as a bad thing, you know? And it made me have a good conversation with my grandkids, you know, just about that subject. So, I just wanted to say it to encourage us to just reach out to our young people and have them try.
And that's where it starts, at home. You know, with the parents, the grandparents, you know? We have to encourage our kids and help them, them to see things in a positive light, you know? And, and we're not getting our people, excuse me, Councilman.
Sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
We're not getting, um, able to get our young people to, um, to apply. I've gone out personally, myself, in neighborhoods, you know, talking to our young men and women, asking them about applying so that they can have oversight over their own communities. But they're not interested. A lot of the people that I spoke to are not interested. And, and that's sad. No, I'm not saying, excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Mayfield, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. That's not, that's, but I'm saying that it, it does start at home. We have to encourage our young people at home. Not saying that we're taking the blame for what is happening. We, we have to come together and work on that, you know? And we have to communicate with our law enforcement. Okay? But I'm not saying, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not taking any more comments from the audience. Anybody else, Councilman, are you through? Meeting is adjourned.